At this point, I'd like to call our public hearing and regular monthly meetings to order. People please stand to pledge the flags. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. This time I'd like to from the hearing, I'll go to the superintendent for presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So we have our first order of business is our annual Code of Conduct hearing. I apologize, we're not, we do not have it up on the board. We do have a copy of our slides for everybody who's in the room, has a purple cover on it here. And this is also will be, if it's not already, it will be attached to the agenda for any reference. The Code of Conduct has been posted since our meeting on Thursday. This past Thursday, that was the original date, we were going to have our hearing due to weather. We had to postpone that until today. However, the Code of Conduct has been, is posted on the website with a survey that is available for review. So just an overview of the full document. The full document is also posted. Our Code of Conduct, New York State educational law requires that every school board adopt and amend annually Code of Conduct for the maintenance of order on school property, which also includes school functions. And it also will govern the conduct of students, teachers, and other school personnel as well as visitors, and shall provide for the enforcement thereof. We also have a board policy, 3410. If you would like to access the board policies, they are available for review online at SalemCSD.org or by contacting the district clerk, Regina Eastman. And the Code of Conduct establishes for the review on the annual basis and updating as necessary in accordance with the law. And therefore also states to all the provisions according to educational law, so I'm not going to repeat those two. So if you would like more information about our board policy, you can refer to that. So key elements of the Code of Conduct are listed, these are the items that are listed in the table of contents. One of them that is not listed here was also of great interest to many people is the dress code, and that is on page 10. And I will discuss separately as we go through the hearing. So typically, dress is student bill of rights and responsibilities, how our community partners, our parents, our teachers, all the stakeholders of the organization should conduct themselves as well as how they would work together. Prohibited student conduct, how we will address and serve students with disabilities. DASS disciplinary penalties or remediation, due process for students, alternative instruction, minimum periods of suspension, and introduction of restorative practices, which we added in over the past few years. And finally, at the end of the document, is listed the dissemination review and how we are required according to educational law on board policy to disseminate the Code of Conduct each year. And I'll talk about a little bit of that near the end of the hearing. So history of our Code of Conduct updates, just to remind everyone that over the past few years, we have done some updates to our Code of Conducts. The first significant change was the addition of our restorative practices and how we would start to integrate those into our community building and our discipline process to, in order to have a more restorative approach to changing behavior in the district. That was updated a few years ago. Updates to the dress code during the 21-22 school year, there was a committee process which included a group of students as well as included feedback from all of the other stakeholders, parents, as well as faculty and staff. And that process led to change in language during the school year, and then we updated the language last year in our Code of Conduct. Updates to DASSA include the Crown Act and update DASSA information that was required by law that was also included last year. So we have had several changes, and as you'll see, I do not recommend very many changes this year. So next, the current Code of Conduct, so some of the highlights that you would find as you review this document, which is, I believe, 20 pages, so I'm not going to go through each page, but just give you some of the highlights. So we updated our required DASSA coordinator information to reflect changes in our building principles for the school year. The building principles are our DASSA dignity for all students act, so that is required by law that we follow the dignity by dignity for all students act guidelines in our school and how we address students bullying and/or mistreatment according to their protected classes, their 13 protected classes. All of that is outlined in detail in the Code of Conduct for more information. In addition, dates were changed to reflect the current 2023-2024 school year in the document. So there were times where the school year is referred to when those dates were changed accordingly. There is one change that I am recommended but was not added to this document. It was something that was brought to my attention recently as a recommendation by our policy organization, Erie One Boses, and they also work with Leo Consultation, is that in our dress code on page 10, so if you do have, I don't know if you have the Code of Conduct in front of you, but on page 10. So on page 10 in the dress code, there's a list of prohibited items, examples of prohibited clothing and attire, and it is recommended to add bulletproof vests, body armor, tactical gear, or facsimile to the list of prohibited items. I do recommend that. I do not believe it's necessary to convene a committee and get feedback to me as a safety issue and concern. Currently, I think that it would be alarming to almost any individual who saw someone walk into the building other than someone in law enforcement who had body armor or a bulletproof vest on. I think it would be very disruptive, and really, there's no provision in the dress code. We always allow for the discretion of administration, but I would like to take this opportunity just to add it in if there's no objection from the board, just to add that in there, so it's just there and it's clear to everyone. So that is the only other recommended change. There are no requirements to be added or changed in our document this year as in previous years. And if something does come to light or is brought to our attention if needed, we can amend the code during the school year and just create an addendum and just bring that to the attention of our school population if that would be necessary. But I don't see that there's any need for significant change. And if we would do so, really, for the most part, it really is something that we try to have. Unless it's a legal requirement, that really isn't open to too much debate, we would have a committee process. For example, if we were to change your dress code again.
Respect, something similar.
Something, yeah.
An innovation.
Yeah, like a costume or. Yeah, so something, you know, maybe it looks like a bulletproof vest or it looks like body armor, but it's not technically body armor. It's a little bit of a technicality, so typically, we've never had that as an issue, but I think it just would be.
I just think about hunting gear and how it's kind of fits the community, that's it.
Right, but that wouldn't, you know, per se, hunting gear would not be considered body armor or that wouldn't be tactical gear, that wouldn't be something. You know, if students have camel on, then like that typically, we don't, we're not, we're not concerned with that. A lot of times, kids will come in after hunting in the morning or afterwards, we're just, now it's up to them. They can't forget to take ammunition or anything. You know, it's, they still would be accountable for that, so it's a pretty strict requirement, you know, that there's no live ammunition campus. But typically, we, kids have been very good about that, so we haven't, it's not an issue so far, hopefully not. All right, so really, no recommended changes other than adding the body armor, changing the dates in our DASSA coordinators. This is the same document that we've operated under for a full school year, if not really prior to that, except for the dress code. And we have had really no challenges or concerns brought forth beforehand. But if there, so our next steps really are, if, so the plan has been posted as I indicated this evening as our required public hearing for this document for the 2023-24 school year. The public comment period will remain open through August 15, which is the day before, through the day before our board meeting. That just gives me the opportunity and our district clerk to put together any relevant information that would need to be shared with the board ahead of time to, if there was a recommendation or something that we thought we really need to give consideration to for changing. The Code of Conduct, we plan to submit that to the Board of Education for adoption with that one change in here, and then adding that line to the dress code for adoption at the August meeting. That is for part of our dissemination, so you're supposed to give that out to every student and faculty member on the first day of school. And we put that, we insert that into our student handbook and our teacher handbooks. And those we would send to the printer on August 17, the day after the board meeting, because we use the Boses Printing Service, and there's a lot of things that are going to the printers at that time. So we want to make sure we have enough time to get it into our handbooks. So that would be the plan, and that is part of the dissemination. We also will have, it will be, once approved by the board, will be posted on our website. And there's some plain language responsibilities that we have that we also comply with, so we would comply with all the dissemination regulations.
So we've stated in the dress code, is it currently on the website now?
No, will update it tomorrow. I guess I didn't want to change that without getting the boards, and so Mrs. Eastman will replace that, and I'll have her, she'll put it in red right now so that people could see that it was a change. And we do have a Google survey document where if someone wanted to through the web, just click on there if they have comments, that that will come to us. And, you know, I also had it indicated in the slides, you can phone, you can contact me through email or the district clerk to share any questions, concerns, or comments that you have about the document during the public hearing period, public comment period.
Is there anybody in the public that has questions or concerns about the Code of Conduct?
Yeah. No, and a few years ago, really, when I first got here and then we had COVID, there had been some sentiment, especially among the female, our female students, about that the dress code was antiquated, and that really was something that was being revamped across, really, districts, you know, at least in the state to my knowledge. We did not actively enforce some of those really gender specific, such as leggings, spaghetti strap, because we knew that, you know, that would not stand up to a challenge. But we really found it, once we came back from COVID, some of the, a group of students brought it to my attention at the time when I was the principal. And it was really just a good time to be able to have a process, a committee process, and really go through the process as really required in order to make a change. In the future, I have seen, I believe, our dress code is, with the suggestion, is solid and similar to everyone else. I think there might be some opportunity just to change the language to also include some, like a list of acceptable items, so I've seen that. So Erie One, our policy, so we subscribe to Policy Service, they recommend legally sound and vetted policies, and they have just some suggestions. It covers everything, it just, it's, it's just as generous as our policy. But I think just sometimes there are a few questions, makes it very clear what extremely brief is those types of things. So it is something that we may want to consider for next year. Now that things are getting a little settled and we would have time just to put that out there for feedback and comparison. But, you know, really, dress code is the biggest, is the biggest thing that sometimes people refer back to. And typically, we have what we call a little town hall or assembly meetings with grade levels at the beginning of the year, and especially in high school, so Mr. Greenie and I just really talked about that, you know, he has plans to continue that. And then really talking to students about, this is your handbook, know what's in there. Really always highlight a few of the key areas they may want to review, attendance policy, dress code, discipline, athletic, you know, policy in terms of if you're out sick, can you play in the game? When can you play? When can you not play? When can you practice? Those types of things. So typically, I think we've had very good communication, and because we've had that communication and we've had something very consistent over the years, I typically, I think it's followed and we haven't had any time for challenges.
Would you just let the record reflect that we closed the public comment at 6:18 for the Code of Conduct? And so we can move on with the regular monthly meeting. And of course, that public comment was specific to the code. But before we do the next thing, Gina, do you have any other amendments to the agenda?
The only agenda we have is the one that was posted as a response for the petition, and that is the only. I do want to ask, is it too loud with the fans, the air conditioner going on? Is it cool? I know it's different tonight, but I want to make sure it's prepared.
Can everybody hear us? Oh, just one other thing, as far as the, our organization meeting, did we identify the correct school in sharing?
Yes, we did, yes.
At this point, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment on any either agenda items or other items. There's anybody?
My name is Bill Key, I've been here before. I have a few questions. I won't take it all that far. Has anybody on the board had a chance to review the end of school slap on the hands from the state of New York and their building project?
I believe so.
Yeah, now, you can see any similarities between what Salem is doing and what they did?
Well, each school district is unique, so, but really, this is just, not, I'm not going to enter into a conversation. We will have a discussion later in our agenda on the building.
I understand that, I did get the referendum from the 2018 page two. So, there's still no vote on this page two, correct?
We have not had, you presented your document at our last regular meeting, and we have not been together since, except for the organizational meeting, and we did not have any regular discussions, we just did the organizational component. So this is the first time we're together in a meeting to have that conversation.
Okay, so there may be a possibility that the public, the taxpayers, could vote on this page two for now.
We, you will hear the outcome of our conversation.
Today, okay, well, it's been rude of me to get up speed and leave before other people leave, but tonight, we only have three people in the public audience. So anyways, I'm going to let you know, good news, bad news. I don't know which way this goes. I haven't been able to talk to the governor yet, but I could talk to her receptionist or secretary or somebody. And they gave me the name of Dr. Trina Parker, I don't know if she's contacted you yet. She probably contacted her first. We had a nice discussion, she is watching a county, just the district, the preventative school. And she said that she was going to review this, and she was going to investigate, make sure, you know, I'm going to make sure that all the I's are dotted and all the T's are crossed. I said, well, there is no form, the school board admits that they did not put page two on the original building project. So therefore, this could be separate. I believe in my heart that there's an agenda here, and that the board believes, maybe in their heart or maybe not, that if this goes to a vote, this is not going to pass. Not going to swear to it, but I don't believe, I've talked to other members, nobody called me and said you wanted more signatures on petitions. So I have talked to several people, they still don't know that what you're planning. I was wondering if this pamphlet is going to get sent out to general public? I mean, you mailed the Salem Central School newsletter out to everybody, or has this already been sent out to everybody?
It's already been sent out.
Okay, well, I'll have to check my mail and see if I.
No, not currently, but when we first brought this up for, for discussion, last summer, a year ago.
We had five, we openly discussed it at five meetings, we had a public forum where that was shared and reviewed. I also referred to it in our district newsletter, our back-to-school newsletter in August, about what some of the considerations are going to be. You looked at the newsletter, it talks about the connector and the items that would be considered in the process as well. So we had very openly discussed it.
I've heard from several people that the enclosure by the gym has been taken off the list. I heard that from the town office of the people. And apparently, we weren't supposed to have a meeting at the hall, that's against the law, I guess, school board law. So anyways, so the next time that any of the concerned citizens want to meet and discuss school business, we'll probably do it at the firehouse. You know, somebody was, I know that Sue went over there and told, at one of the meetings over there, said that there couldn't be any school board meetings or school board, or school discussions could not be held at the council hall. So just to let you know that, I know what's going on, I know what's going on with the Salem Historical Society. You know, there are people that are concerned about what you plan on doing. The last question I had is, if Mosaic is good for this project here, which according to the dollar amount is $4.3 million, and it's how we only had $4.1, figures don't lie, the players can figure. If they do a good job on this, come in 20% less, going to leave the school district with about $800,000 or $700,000 for phase three. Is there going to be a phase three added on to the page two?
We have not had our discussion, you know.
Okay, well, then I guess, I guess I'm done talking, I'll just stay for the rest of the meeting. And if I have a question, I'll raise my hand, and if I'm not called on.
We have another public comment session at the end of the meeting.
I know you do. And that public comment session was thanks to me, because Will Ross is here. Every meeting itself, there's public comment in the beginning. The board would go through all of their stuff, all their items, and just ban. So I approached the board and I said, hey, I have to remember for a whole month what you guys talked about. Can you add an ending public statement meeting? So that people who are in the audience get up and ask the question after they've just heard it. So thank you very much for your time, I'm going to do my very best.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Moving on to our reports.
So a few things to share, so very exciting. We have our new principals on board, so we've been very busy with their transition. So welcome to Mr. Vini and Mrs. Record. And so we've had some very productive admin team meetings, and they're working on professional development, is getting to know everybody and our programs, and we are all very busy getting ready for the school year.
Are they in this room?
Yes, Mr. Greenie and Mrs. Record. And so we also will, when we first hired them and announced their appointments, we did do a little bit of a spotlight and talk about them a little bit in the media. But we will do a little more informal and fun newsletter spotlight in our back-to-school newsletter, just a kind of little, some fun facts about each of them. And they're also working on maybe putting together one or two meet and greets once we get into maybe August and the beginning of the school year, just so that if anybody wants to come and meet them ahead of time, they can do that. So we're, they're working on some details for that. So we will be getting the word out. And speaking of that, hopefully you've seen our new website. It's still not 100% built, but it is very much, it's been some significant work on it. And so at this point, we do have, we have conducted the switch changeover because of the opportunity to continue to work on it, and see some of the updates and learn about, you know, making sure our calendars, we see if our calendar is a little different, but I think it'll be more efficient. So there's really just one calendar, plus the athletic calendar that will feed into it, so it doesn't depend on so many different people to be compared. There was that kind of upcoming events, which was a different theme than the calendar. So I think that this will help us a lot with streamlined communication.
So sports and activities and school.
Yes, awesome. You know, we would ask for the boards and the public's patience, that really, the goal is to really have it solid and running by the beginning of school year. So you will not see all of that working perfectly yet. We welcome feedback because that helps us work on, you know, kind of still some of the improvements that we need to be made. So what they do is they take our current website and they kind of basically just push it over into this new template. But some of the things that we've been working on based on feedback is not having to take so many clicks to get information that you're looking for. So when you click on the Board of Education, you have more of a landing page, and you have basically links, and you have all of these different options, but also within an informative format, so that you're not just, okay, here's a little information on the board, now I got to go through and click on the left, and then I got to click on another document. We're trying to make that a little more user-friendly. We have some kind of, I call them cheater tabs for the different buildings, the district, the project. And then we have some of those what I call buttons with the Board of Education, our cafeteria, our business office. So I feel like, you know, it's very exciting. There is a new app for your phone, so if anybody's watching the recording, we encourage you to check that out. Again, as we get closer, the company app to you that we're working with, they work with us on, we have, we'll put together really a whole publicity campaign about the new website, how to sign up for the app. There's also, when you're on the app on your phone, there's where you can click for rooms. So if you have two children, then you can click on your child. So if you have two children, then you can click on your child. It's going to communicate to a school tool. So if your child's in secondary, you can see their schedule. You can communicate, kind of if you're familiar with the Remind app, which automatically connects you into more, like a texting or an email. Very streamlined communication process with faculty and staff, with children, between students and teachers. So there are a lot of ways to communicate with us. It'll be streamlined. So we'll also be having some information at the beginning of the year, how to kind of sign up for that. Teachers needed, we'll be doing training the first, the second week of school with our teachers, getting that set up. So I think really by mid-September, we should be up and running. And I think it'll be, really help us to be on our way with, you know, that was really a significant part of our feedback in our strategic planning and our blueprint development process of communication. I think this is really going to help us get in that more positive direction and get some feedback. So, you know, certainly we welcome the feedback, but it really won't be solid until, till the first of the year, since the school year. Final conversation with a special education teacher candidate has been had. And so we're just really putting the finishing touches on that. And as a person who's a retiree, has very relevant experience in the special ed area that we're looking to fill. And so if all goes well, we anticipate an appointment at the next board meeting. And so that will be both of our special education teacher positions will be filled. And then right now, we have posted a budget for a .6 speech teacher, provider, and just with some of the additional students we're bringing back, increased pre-K needs and early emergent speech issues that we've been finding in our screenings. We have no applicants at a part-time. Speech, speech providers are few and far between. Mrs. Crandall and Karen McGregor and I met recently and really looked at the financial impact of if we put out for a 1.0 full-time. And I think I had mentioned this briefly, but probably before our new board members came on. So in the meantime, also, we've had some additional transfer ends and enrollments that have increased our need for speech. We have actually 40-plus, at least 40 additional students who will need speech this coming year, which was a little more significant than when we budgeted that .6.
40 additional?
Yes. Yes. So, you know, it, it's feasible to have that 1.0. So just a reminder that right now, in addition to our two speech, we're contracting out for $15,000 with a provider who's not, would not be able to pick up all of those. So if we could get a 1.0, we would not have to spend that $15,000. In addition, as I had mentioned before, we had approved recently the contract, really the agreement with Washington County. And they're just really accepting what they're going to pay us. And they actually just increased it from what we, what they originally had sent us for the new year. But then we will also get reimbursed for, through the county for a portion of the pre-K services that we provide utilizing this provider. So it's not, it's something that we feel would be financially possible, really considering that we would be able to bill back from, get, bill back from the county. And then also, we would not have to contract out for that provider. We feel that, that, that would work for us. I don't, still don't know if we'll get a 1.0, but I think we might have a better shot if we're going up against other, other districts that are looking for a 1.0. So you know, that's something that I, we need, and I would recommend, you know, at least putting an anticipated 1.0 and see what we get. And then we can kind of look at what, you know, what their experience is and what that would come in at, and then we'll take another look financially. But it's something that we can't do without. And it's going to be very difficult to contract out. We will have to contract with Voces. That is aidable, but I'm not certain they could provide us with, with a .8 or a 1.0. So I'd like to at least do a search if the board is willing to consider that. Because time is of the essence. We're getting close to the new school year. And so if that was possible, we would, you know, post for that because it is an additional position. So something they have to add in.
Why the unexpected 40, Bill?
What?
Why the unexpected 40?
Well, there's a few things. So you always get, so we have somewhat of a, I wouldn't say a small percentage, but a transient population that sometimes moves because there's limited housing, moves between districts. So you get those additional expenses where you might have to give services to students. But also, when we create the budget, we're doing that in January, February. We haven't done our pre-Ks for kindergarten screenings yet. And so really, a lot of those needs emerge from those screenings that are done in May. And so that, so we really don't know for certain what some of those needs are early on. We can do a pretty good job once kids are here and students are in, starting in kindergarten. You can kind of say, all right, we're just pushing everybody up a year, and we just gotta really figure out what's coming in. It's always your best guess. But we have just between transfers in. We've had, so a very good thing, but we've had some large families coming in and some, we've had some students registering. And so since really that January, February, a number of, there's a number of circumstances.
It's important to keep in mind also, kids got pre-K and K now are COVID kids.
I didn't want to say-
They're bringing a whole set of issues.
Right, right. And really, so this is something that's always, something that sometimes we lose sight of is that early intervention will make all the difference in the services and what we need to provide in, you know, the more distant future. And as much, the more early intervention we can provide, well, they make a lot of times greater gains at those, the earlier years. And hopefully, you know, the goal always is for all of our students is that hopefully eventually that they develop the skills that they need to be able to exit out of some of those services or reduce them. So, you know, I think it's money well spent.
It starts moving in overall.
So, so then we'll go ahead and we'll just kind of canvas and see if changing that 12 all-time would possibly increase our applicant pool. Thank you for that. Just, just an update. So I met, so recently, we had a small committee group. I think I had mentioned this previously that we had a small group interview. An SRO candidate lives in the community. Everybody very much liked him. He's a retired police officer commander from Albany Police. And seems like a very good fit for our district. And so this morning, I met with Captain Leclair from Washington County Sheriff's Office and the candidate. And seems like we've kind of come to, you know, agreement, kind of what we were looking for in terms of more schedule, those types of things, how that would work. And so actually, Captain Leclair did send me a contract today to review, send the attorney. And then obviously, the board would review that before approving it for next meeting. So just to update our new board members, this is something that we budgeted for. It is in our budget, and the cost that we agreed upon would be within, within the budget range. So, you know, it's something that is many are looking forward to in the district. And I think really just having, you know, appreciate the board's support and having someone here not only to, you know, build and continue to build community with us and work with us. Really just knowing that there's someone here on site if there is an incident, really, I think makes all the difference in terms of knowing that we sometimes have very long response times. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for us. And so seems to be in progress. So we will have that before you for August as well, to approve that. And just finally, just a reminder that our public hearing for our district safety plan will be at our August board meeting. That plan is currently posted in advance for 30 days, also seeking feedback, similar to the public comment for the code of conduct. You will have that ahead of time for your review. And as I will tell you that it's, there are just some minor changes from the previous one. We will make sure you have that time for review along with the building plans. The building plans are not public. They are confidential. And so I've asked Freedom Risk Management, our company who works with us on our safety, open safety initiatives and our plans. They will come to present, help present and answer questions related to the district plan, as well as in executive session. I would recommend that the board agree to an executive session so that we could have, so that you could have the building plans reviewed, reviewed and/or any changes. And then you would, you would approve both plans at the August. And those need to be submitted to New York State by the beginning of October. So usually, we like to disseminate those out to the law enforcement agencies in September, as early as possible, so they have those updated plans. And that's all I have. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Looks okay, thank you.
And moving on to the consent agenda, I am removing the minutes for the session. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like removed from the consent agenda? Entertained a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes the treasurer's report, the internal claims audit, condition of accounts, the CSE report, and the surplus report.
So moved.
By Heidi, by Peter. All those in favor, please sit in the five members in the chair. Motion carried five zero. When I was looking over the, the minutes, I do have two parts of the agenda that I would like to have amended. And underneath visitors and communication, it does indicate that Mr. Pete spoke to us regarding the archway. But also, he did present a document titled Position to the Salem Central School District, Salem, New York. And the purpose of that document was to demand a referendum slash vote for the proposed phase two. And the record should reflect that. I did accept that document on behalf, on behalf of the Board of Education. So we could have that record reflect that. And also, I think it was just a typo, but underneath personnel, it would be Lori Patrick's retirement date got cut off. So it does, she'll need that if she goes to retire. So it should reflect December 31st, 2023. We just don't want Lori. If no one has any objections or any other amendments to the minutes, a motion to accept the minutes with those following.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. We didn't have committees listed on our agenda, but we haven't been active since the end of the year. And we'll discuss committee membership and types of committees later on in the agenda. Moving on to, to action items. Seven one, entertain a motion to approve the retirement payout that approved sick days and incentive to Rebecca Bayton Johnson as presented.
So moved.
Second by Tom. Questions, perspectives? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve Lori Patrick as a clerical substitute effective January 1st, 24.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve following extended school year appointments to be effective July 1st for the extended school year program from July 3rd to August 11th, Julie Myler as substitute teacher A, and Ashley Campbell, substitute teacher A.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. There are 19 advisor positions listed. Does anybody just need to renew a name or don't have personal objections? I'll provide the 19 assignments. Entertained a motion to approve the following advisor positions for the 2324 school year. These appointments are in the capacity of employees at will. It does not guarantee employment for the entire season slash term. Therefore, pay may be pro-rated for the time where the list is as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Peter. Second. Second by Tom. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment to Rebecca Quinn as Danny Molino's teacher mentor for experienced teachers through your request for the 2324 school year.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve Patricia Morris through Voces as a mentor from Cheryl Record, elementary principal, effective through the 2324 school year.
So.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. Do you want those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Have two building use requests. Entertained a motion to approve the building use requests on lunch, learn and play for wrestling for allocated coordinator by Trevor LeBlanc. There are two sessions, July 11th and July 25th, 11 through 13, and the 25th to the 27th, if you remember, from 12 to 4 in the main gym.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Sounds like one.
Good question.
So it's a, for all the kids, they'll just do different.
Sounds like it. Sounds like it. Yep. It's one of the lunch, learn and play activities. And then I believe this, we, is our wrestling camp. Yes. So the wrestling club has, so it's been very busy.
My son has been complaining about having to clean up after that.
Very. It's been very hot.
There was beach wrestling today.
Oh, yes, that's been fun. This is the second annual beach lesson. They bring in sand.
Sounds wonderful.
And they-
It's a lot of deals. They went all the way to the beach. That's where they brought in sand.
Yeah, I do remember.
I know, right?
That is, I think there was a, there is a request on that.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the request from lunch, learn and play to use the district's facilities in case of inclement weather. This would be for approximately 95 students from the hours of 11:00 through 5:00 Monday through Friday as a fee.
So moved.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
So what's, is that like a gym? Or like, what are they looking to use? About what we're-
Typically, that would be the gym. The gym. If the gym wasn't used, then we'd probably work it out for the auditorium. So we connected their point person for this inclement weather with Paul. And so they would call ahead and we would, we would figure it out in the moment. But we don't have any plans other than the wrestling times. We don't have any plans really. We're, it's not, we're not doing any, yeah, anything else in there that would prevent, prevent that space from being utilized. Would that be the first go-to? And if, if for some reason we need another space, we could make the auditorium and/or the cafeteria work in the short. And it's really, it's not for, hopefully, a whole day. It would just be maybe for an hour or, you know, until it passes. They're, they're doing some renovations over there. Typically, they would go into the warehouse area, but I believe they're doing some renovations or something. Some type of work in the building that's preventing their ability to use it at some point in time.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the health services agreement including Seattle Central School and Hudson Headwaters Health Network, effective for the 2324 school year.
So moved.
So this is just for, this is our, our typical agreement that I'm just serving as our school doctor for the year.
It's good relationship.
Yes. And that's how we became connected with the dental, the dental service that they're providing to the community that's separate from this. Because obviously, we pay for their services, our school, for the school physician services, for consults, for a variety of reasons. And then of course, any type of athletic or student- And then of course, um, any type of athletic or student physicals that we would, um, go through them for. Um, the dental is um, separate, but if you recall, it was something we approved in the spring, so that annual contract, we would continue to have that relationship. We're giving them our space so they can come in and provide a service to the community. And we're just allowing you to use our space. That probably will come up again in the spring.
Brittany was not aware, um, Hudson Headwaters says closed on the property.
Yes.
Next to the beach wall.
That's over here.
Breaking ground this year.
This year?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say. Not quite so soon, but yes. Maybe cleaning the area.
Yeah, it's going to be a uh, Asian facility as well. So it's gonna be, but there... The discussion I had with, with my, my doctor's point today, uh, we respect the facility here to look very similar in size to Marlo family house. So it's gonna be, it's not gonna be a slant of a...
Probably nice. Great addition. I wanna be gay. We need that.
Yeah. Perhaps even pharmacy. Yeah.
Really? Oh, really? No. That would be great. Yeah.
It's dental, medical, and perhaps some pharmacy.
All those in favor, please sit in five lines of the committee here. Okay, so that's the end of our action. Jen, was that the end of our action items?
Um, it is. I actually did fail to flip the action item, the...
The bus.
The bus. We can do that for next time.
Okay.
That was a, that was actually added on after organizational meeting. We thought we could get it outside.
So then moving on to our discussion of the capital project.
Right, so um, I, we've had some discussions, as you know, and uh, so I wanted to just um, present some options to the board. Obviously, we have a change in board, so um, I think it's important that everyone's up to date and really, and knows what our options are for the future. So um, as everyone is aware, the capital project that was approved, the two thousand eighteen project, um, was approved by a different board, a different superintendent. As we've discussed along the way, uh, obviously there were some remaining funds. Um, there were not add-on items indicated in, in the case of additional, having leftover money, usually would identify some add-ons with that you would then go to. Those would be the first priorities, um, so that the community and everyone was clear. Um, that's okay. And um, so um, the discussion, so this originally, the thought was that it was a more significant sum, some remaining of nine and ten million. Because of COVID, because of um, some delays in, in being able to complete work, we had some work, as you're aware, that really lagged over the course of almost a year after we were officially done getting closeouts and getting numbers together. And so over time, so originally we had discussions that there were, you know, there, there was a thought that there was more significant funds for, four point one, four point three million is a significant sum of money, but we thought it was much greater than that. Um, as you know, um, the previous superintendent really had started the conversation with the board at that time about um, whether or not to use those funds. At the time, there was a thought that possibly there would not be an opportunity for other, for another project, and that it might be um, prudent to utilize those additional funds. And so as I was coming in last summer, even before I officially came in, some of those discussions had started about what the board was looking for on the list, considering previous discussions. And um, we had several uh, discussions um, at almost every board meeting since July first um, through February, uh, including a public hearing. So we had um, and the information, as I had mentioned, in the newsletter that went out, um, we had our public forum, so we had uh, in our minutes. And obviously, we got, we were open to public comment in each, um, at each meeting. So at the time, due to the broad language in the referendum that was approved, um, with the information that was given and had, the board had made the decision, uh, as I was coming in and prior to me, that to, to move forward. And uh, so originally the list was larger, when we had about ten million and we had contemplated, uh, some community members have reminded us that we had contemplated improving our roofs, uh, putting that in there. And so we, and having the, what we call the west side entrance over by the CSC office and gym enclosed, along with the other ones for the increased safety. Um, and moving the, moving the elementary office, doing some ADA upgrades that we, um, were cost prohibitive, you know, in, in the scheme of, you know, the priority list with the original project. So um, the board at the time opted to move on. The board took action in February to approve those additional add-on items because they were covered under the broad language of the referendum. Um, you know, that, that is an option to continue to move forward. As the board knows, as we've received public comment, we've received a letter, we've received, um, I believe there is really a mixed feeling in the community. So I know that we've heard from some people who oppose, but I, uh, also there, there are many who are in support. Um, so I think that's, you know, really, um, it's not clear. I don't, I don't think it's one-sided, but I do think it's something that we want to consider our process. Um, and so I think really to make sure that the board is making a thoughtful decision, I wanted to, um, you know, we can move forward with um, our current, our current path. Um, but also Karen McGregor and I met, um, and we talked and Karen, I asked her to reach out to fiscal advisors, who is um, kind of our financial firm that we consult with on these projects, just if we did not, if we did not borrow the remaining four point one with three million, you know, we'd have to look at the pennies at this point. We're just getting ready to close it out finally. Um, so um, we don't have that, we, we probably could get the final total now, um, but we're getting ready for our audit, so we're working on that as well. But what I would, but what I asked was if we don't borrow the four point one billion, what would we be eligible to borrow? Um, because there are some advantages that we've had discussions before and certainly Karen and we could ask fiscal advisors to come in and talk to the board and our community about the advantages to carrying up what you, you know, personally, we all know and understand that carrying a debt load is not always recommended. But there are some advantages to a school district for, to have capitals and to have um, kind of a steady, you, you don't wanna have your, all your debt drop off and not have any for twenty years, which is a little bit...
It's a steady income coming from your building, right? Right? We all know that the district gets eighty percent age. For every dollar we spend, you get eighty cents back, right? In age. So that's a steady, not only do you have a steady debt, but you also have a steady income. So when that debt drops off, a huge chunk of it comes off. So that's what most districts have a schedule, it's just like your bus rotation, right? You, you have a rotation of the...
So we do have, and we could get that for you, we could um, have Karen give me the, give us, give me the current schedule and I can um, have that for you to, to reflect on. We do have some debt coming off.
Right. And not a lot, but... We present that in our budget period, so, or for the meeting. So we know we've got two years out on, I believe, one project for four years.
Right.
Don't worry, but we always make that very clear.
Right. So, so there would be some advantages, um, if we thought about going out to a new project because about was some, so uh, we have some that'll be falling off in the next few years, we would be replacing that with something new. So it is worth a consideration, is um, do we stay this course of the four point one? Um, and is it was something at the time for, you know, I'm not certain, but you know, for brighter reasons, we don't look into this at the time, but I do think it's important to maybe take a look at this. Um, we could create a referendum, a new referendum for up to around fifteen million. We don't, you know, the, the exact number, we'd have to work, um, uh, but it would be around that amount. We don't necessarily have to go up to fifteen million, but we could do that. We could then take, so as we know, we originally had a bigger wish list and we had to cut back when we realized we didn't have nine million, we only had about four million. So um, one of the, one of the focuses is we would still do our ADA accessible items. So everything that we've currently been working on, um, we would put in that referendum. Plus, if you recall, and I did include the, the current, the work, um, in September, we were presented with the additional, so many papers here, I'm pretty sure we'll run like two. Um, oh, it's in here. Um, so it's dated September, so the mosaic. So originally, they had presented to us, so this one right here, it says nine and a half million on the front. That was the one that we had asked for, enclosing all those main entrances, the connector, um, and the west side entrance. We had to take off the closure of the west side over by the gym because it would, we didn't have enough money. So that was the lower priority and we had put that as an add-on. So if there was extra money at the end of the four point William, million, as that was in public comment, mentioned, what will happen if there's money left over? We had, we had in February identified additional items and works that would be done with that. But also included here was the um, estimate on all of our non, I call them asphalt because the um, technical construction term.
There's three different kinds.
Right, right. But our, our, all of our roofs that are not asphalt, which are near end of life, which is a concern, has been brought up. Um, I think for everyone, it was something that wasn't a people...
One year, two years, ten years? Do you know when it ends up?
Um, over, over the, over lifetime.
It was over.
We're... And we've been, you know, we've been up... I don't, you know, we, we have been handling it with patches and, you know, that was really gonna be next on our list. So we could include that in here. So really, if you looked at that, I gave you that just for your reference of the additional items that were in there. So we took that and it would also says nine and a half million. We could also look at, um, uh, there's been a lot of talk over the years for a new greenhouse. I feel very strongly that we, you know, maybe we lost out. So, you know, we have a little play. This nine and a half million is probably, we'd have to get a new cost estimate. This is, this is old, uh, probably at about six percent inflation since then. Um, so we wanna get a little bit of an updated number, but I still think there's some play um, for a greenhouse. We could talk about um, kind of um, upgrading and, and or resurfacing the track. Um, that has been something that we've been talking about that's coming probably due in the near future, so we could utilize that. Um, because we also remember that when you do a big project like this, and again, Karen is more of our detailed person who can explain this more articulately, but then I can, but there are always some things that aren't aidable that you do work on. And so we also have our one and a half million in the capital reserve as well, which would help with some, some of those non-aideable.
And you know...
It's not restricted in any capacity? Well, I thought that was restricted to the track.
No.
No. We have money in there that we promised the voters would cover it, but there's more than enough except for the track. That would have to be voted on by the voters.
Right, if we took it out of the, we could take it out of the repair reserve and have it voted, or we could utilize, it's kind of just, you know, we have the one and a half million in our capital reserve, we're just taking out a different spot. The money's still there, it does, um, by the way, would have to go to the voters, either, you know, zero direction to have over Google for us to access. To utilize. So when, when you vote on the bond project, then there also would be a referendum to be able to utilize that one and a half million, or if we only set a portion or one million, we would designate the amount out of the capital reserve that we would wanna um, assign to the project to, to help reduce the cost um, to that spare.
So can I...
Yeah.
So when Julie's talking about the um, project fifteen million, fourteen, fifteen million that we talked to bond council about, that's because every district is only allowed to borrow or have projects up to a certain amount of money based on your building. So because we just had that big project, that's why we could go out and do another twenty-one million or, we have a, a maximum allowable cost factor that we are allowed to use. And that's what we rely on bond council to help us with, because they know all the state of formula. So that's why that number is, that's something I'm gonna make up a number, um, that's the maximum we could get aid on and or borrow.
Right.
Okay? So I'm seeing where these numbers...
And we have voted this by mosaic because they're very good. So basically, if you got down to the nitty-gritty of it, which we won't necessarily do at this moment, is it's um, you get a certain amount that's assigned to be used in the primary building, that's assigned to be used in the main, the main building, even though there's elementary, they call it the high school building. Um, so there's certain amounts and we voted it by mosaic and said, here's kind of what we're looking, you know, to do and possible some additional items. And they feel that that would be like... No, they didn't see anything that would say, oh, you're gonna be five million off because you can't, you can't.
Simply based off the calculation, fifteen million is what you're allowed to buy.
And broke out by the building construction.
Right, right, yeah, about fifteen million.
You're breaking out by a building.
Well, they...
Well, because...
Work you do.
You're gonna lot, yeah, they're gonna allow you, so you can only do so much work on that building within this and almost so much work in this. We couldn't spend them already done.
You couldn't spend it all on the other building.
On the fifth, on that primary building. And some of it...
Already done and what?
Yeah, and some of, like, some of these four million things are based on enrollment. And so, you know, a lot of times people say, well, listen, it would be great to put an auditorium in. We could consider putting an auditorium in, but the idea was at the time, the discussion was put an auditorium in, but we, we need that gym space because we, um, because of the size of our, the primary gym, we can't have it for fifth and sixth grade. So we need that gym space to utilize it. Um, and so the idea, I think, at the time was to add on a second gym, but our enrollment, so you'll have to have increasing enrollment, you have to have, there's certain square footage.
If you, if you do not have enough gym space, are you still restricted by your enrollment?
We do have enough gym space now.
But if you...
Because we're using the auditorium. But the auditorium isn't considered...
It's a gym.
Right, it is.
Essentially, that's a built one.
Additional square footage.
Right.
Right.
You could do something alternatively to reconfigure spaces. It's just, and we could build, but we would pay one hundred percent of every...
It wouldn't be aidable.
Even...
You'd have to increase it to eight percent.
Yeah.
So you mean if you, you happen to have a, an auditorium and, and you suddenly lack the gym space, it doesn't become aidable to add the gym space?
No, we don't think of that.
Only if your, your enrollment was significantly increasing, then most likely.
They wanted to extend the gym so we could have better um, wrestling beats here, the big beats, and it was just caught up with...
Because we have the three gyms.
And that was before the significant inflation we've seen over the last year. So that was considered in the two thousand eighteen referendum, correct? That was...
So if you felt that the, the population really desired an auditorium, what would be the means of getting it done?
Having additional gym space.
Yeah. That you could afford to pay for.
So you'd have to pay twice, you know, two major capital projects in order to...
Well, I would have to be part of this project because we really, we're gonna have to be mindful and so if we, and so I got a couple other points and then we could have, we could probably have a fuller conversation, but the bottom line is that um, we have to be looking, we have to start thinking about kind of that, not really stacking, but as I call it, it's the kind of descending debt schedule, right? And keeping that steady for that cash flow, as Karen talked about. But one of the things that's on the horizon that we did learn about a year, year and a half ago, where the asphalt roofs probably have about ten, in about ten years, we need to start looking at that. And about, what was that, about a year and a half, two years ago? That, that estimate was ten million dollars at that time. Yeah, before we saw that eight, the six percent on top of eight percent in CPI. So, you know, we have to start saving for that and at some point, we're going to have to have a capital project that up probably ten to fifteen million at that point, probably fifteen million to just do those roofs. And so again, we're gonna have to kind of look at, and I'm not saying we couldn't consider the auditorium, but it's something we could put together, but it's something that was recently looked at for the two thousand eighteen. We can have mosaic, um, talk about that. So a couple other things, and I wanna talk about the work that we've done so far. So a couple other things we could add in, replace the... So a couple other things we could add in, replace the greenhouse, replace, refurbish the front flag pole, um, the entrance, the facade and the sidewalk, so that was something, um, our facade is starting to deteriorate in that front entrance there. Um, it's not real noticeable, they paint, they patch, but it's really, um, starting to fall apart. And, um, some of that, the senses, there's a little roof on there, um, and there's some leaks going into the columns. So, um, they can do that, um. Our dial has a very similar facade to ours, and it's not a, a large cost, but was something that would need to be capital work. It's not going to be considered a repair, so it's something to consider. Um, there was some discussion previously, again, there's probably more discussion on the history of it. Um, in my opinion, we have, um, we have, we're gaining some student population at where the, um, playground, um, the wood chips that there was quite a bit of conversation about how to surface that, um, they're not ADA, they're not, they don't make it accessible.
That law changed suddenly in three years?
No.
No, it's just an ugly battle, but I can fill you in on that.
Um, I would say there is some history on it that we could fill you in on, um, but I would say that, um, I would say most people would agree it's probably worth another look. Again, would not be a significant cost, but it would be, I do, you know, if we were going to do a project, I think it would be something to work in here. If not, we could, we really need to start planning, we could do a hundred, we have the, from the money, but we could budget a hundred thousand, cap, up to a hundred thousand a year, capital work, and then get paid reimbursement for that. Um, we could have put that in the budget for this year just because of our limitations and, and being a little tight with funds. Um, but that's something we could do in the future as well, but it's something I think is important to consider. Um, something that they were already working on as part of, um, the connector situation is when the engineers, so we, there has been work done. Um, and I'll talk about the cost of that in, uh, in a minute. Um, but to create a drop-off loop over here, so there was some question, it's, we really boxed ourselves in. I'm not sure they, because they just redid the tennis courts and the basketball court, and would have probably been a better idea to push those back and create a drop-off loop there. But there is, the engineer said it's very feasible to use the space behind there, you could create a drop-off loop back there. Um, kids could go in that back door over, um, by the new little addition. Um, so when, if we do have the connector, then, um, we can change the routing and use this just for buses only, parents can go, come up, they would, they can work on that traffic pattern, so there, all the traffic isn't backing up. Um, so there, so there really are some, um, some possibilities, I think, to make some improvements, and I have the necessary upgrades to the track. So there are other items, if the board did want to go to this room, we could consider. Obviously, um, we would have to prioritize, and we would rank them, and if there isn't, you know, so we would want to have some items so this doesn't happen again in the future, this confusion about a second vote, is we would have add-on items. So if there are additional funds remaining, the board could decide to go ahead and finish the list. Um, but we have currently into this current project, so I understand, um, you know, this is why we had, um, and I know that the board really supported a very transparent process. So we are probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars in of owing for the work. If we don't move forward, um, so say we stop this project, we don't move forward with a referendum, we need to pay that out of the general fund. You cannot pay that out of the capital work. Because there's no capital project to charge it to if we don't, because we're submitting the plans, and I said, for these additional, for these add-ons. Um, so I'm not sure, um, how many people understand that, but this, this is why it's really important for people to have a, you know, we want to, um, get our, our campaign out there, if we move forward with a new one, and really make sure people are understanding the timeline. Because if you stop work, it's a significant impact to the district and the taxpayers. If we move forward and include, and include basically what we were, this four-point-one million work into another project with some additional items, we can use some of that work that's already done in terms of a lot of the plans. It would have to be costed, then we can bill it back. We would tend to, we have to pay that, we, we just got to bill. We're going to have to pay that, but we, I've had them stop work while we delivery and while, while we consider these.
Clarify, so if we took the work that we've currently submitted to SED, and then we could rule that into a new project, or we would have?
So we haven't, we haven't done a final submission to SED.
Okay.
Right, because we had it work reading once the board in February said, yes, we're going to move forward with these additional items. Now, Mosaic has been working on the plans, engineers came in and sat down with us, we went through all of the site work plans, we've talked about it, so they're working on posting that out and developing the specific plans. So as I explained to the Historical Preservation Commission, all we did was present conceptual drawings. We haven't presented materials or any of the details, you know, just these are, this is conceptually what it will look like. And so that work was starting. And the idea, the goal was is that we would have to by January submit to SED to get our approvals, to get our bids out, to stay on schedule for next summer. So this would set us back, I think, about one year, but we have not submitted to SED for the approval. We have to, we have to submit to SED, and we have to, um, submit to SHPO, which is the State Historical Preservation Office. So, um, we work, um, we work with, um, our local organization, Historical Preservation Commission, Salem. Um, however, um, our governing entity is New York State Education Department and the State Historical Preservation Office. They are the ones who approve the plans and make sure that we are historically accurate. So, um, then we would move forward if they had agreed on those.
So explains me how you're saying that the stuff that we've got, conceptually talking about right now, that we owe obviously money for, and those stuff, how would we take that and roll that into the?
So because you front the money.
Gotcha.
So we front the money, but then once SED approved it, then we, then Karen submits, there's, there's a process, we submit, they give, they, they, they allow us to borrow that, get that money.
I just was trying to clarify.
And so if we're making, so anything we do now.
Based off of what's utilized in the, in that future plan?
Um, no, but as I think work towards that, I think if we had nothing from this four-point-one million, if we had nothing on from that list, we would not be able to submit that. But if we go with the majority of that, then we would be able to then say, this was work we were starting. So there's really, I don't think a, um, timeline, but, um, basically a fair amount of work needs to be done to prepare, and, and it has to get approved. If it doesn't get approved, you, the district has to pay that money out of their general fund for all the plans that are made. So, um, but, you know, again, I feel like, um, you know, we've, we've had some mixed reviews on the connector, I think, um, um, you know, some people feel very strongly about not having it, but I think a lot of people, once they've seen the design, I think there's, um, you know, we need to do a better job in our campaign, um, because a lot of people keep saying, um, and there's a lot of communication, even the newspaper contacted me and said, you're destroying, you're going to basically, um, remove the archway. We're not removing it, we're putting glass in the arches, we're putting glass there. We're not taking it away, we're maintaining the accuracy according to that, and we would be working then with the architects and the two-horse historical, um, organizations, once we got to that point about the materials, but.
So how do we, I mean, so we advertise, we put it out there, we do public information, we do public sessions, like, I mean, I don't know what more we can do to get people to come, I guess is my question.
Right.
Like, I understand people are upset, and that's fine, but I don't see those people coming. I mean, there are some, yes, but I don't see the majority of these people coming to meetings and discussing with us so that we could all work together to try to make these.
Right, so I'm not, again, I, I think it's some of it's misinformation.
Yeah.
That, and I don't think it's unintentional, I think it's just misinterpreting or not, or maybe hearing something that wasn't quite accurate and, um, not confirming that with the district. So I think we'll do our best, um, I think the majority of the people are pretty clear. Um, but I, I will say that, um, you know, I think it's something that I would recommend, I feel very strongly, we need to include that, I think it is a safety issue. Um, and students are passing between there, there are a variety of safety concerns and issues with that. Um, but I think we can also meet some of the other needs that people, you know, I think there is a, a concern that we're prioritizing the roof over that, well, now we can do both.
I think you did the right thing by putting a stop work order on it. It's to have a plan at nine million, and to have your budget, budget cut, and to not have a comprehensive plan that's well thought out, that has a ten, twenty-year vision, doesn't make sense. Yeah, it, it's patchwork, you know, a, a thoughtful ten-year, twenty-year plan.
Right, and, and I mean, I think, um, this is just putting everything back in that, that we.
And I think that those safety, security, accessibility, all of those important pieces need to be in there, but obviously, if we don't have a roof over our head, then those, those things are, you know, so that kind of ties it all in together.
It's not much fun.
We're trying, right, we're trying to improve and move forward.
And so I think, um, so we will, so we would, um, so a possible timeline, if we chose to go this route, is that I would recommend, um, that the board tonight, or next meeting, if you had some time to think about it, but the board would have to first rescind, rescind the approval, um, that, that we gave in February. Um, I did provide the language, if you wanted to do it tonight, you want to wait, we would provide the language, you know, for the next meeting within the agenda. Um, I don't have a specific timeline, but because a majority of the work has been started, we need some recosting, we would need to maybe at next meeting have some discussions, um, about, and we still have, you know, I think, um, the responses are still relevant from, you know, the recent one, and a lot of, um, really even our thought exchange that we just had in our strategic plan, and people are concerned about safety, um, and communication, and, um, just knowing and having, you know, building conditions and, and really having, um, a kind of sound and solid building.
And, and sort of just listening to the community because they're very interested, or they, they really want more communication.
Right.
And, and they are concerned about safety, it just might give us an opportunity to just present it a little bit differently and to really say, hey, we're listening to you and, and we agree.
And I think conceptually, last time, the, um, it was presented as, you know, there were going to maybe be garage doors there, and you were going to roll them up, the other buses are on those conversations.
I agree.
That's not what we're talking about. That's not what we're talking about, it would be very tough.
What's the lead time for it?
Um, so my sense is, and, um, so depending on the discussion tonight, um, I, we, I would contact Mosaic. I think it's possible that if, um, it really depends on how long the board would like to kind of deliberate about what the direction would be, and that would certainly be up to the board. Um, but if the board seemed to be, um, feeling that this was a direction to go, we could really start working with Mosaic and kind of putting together, start kind of putting that together, that bigger package, and starting to talk about some of those add-on items. Um, you know, if we could kind of have a solid sense for, for, for those add-on items, um, by, you know, September, October, then I think we'll, um, we could really start our campaign. You know, I think if we, um, were focused, we might be able to, again, I have to run it by Mosaic, but I believe they've done a lot of the work. And, um, you know, they've done the work for the roofs, they've measured, they've got, they've got some good numbers. You know, it's really good something, Adam.
Reason I'm asking.
I'm thinking March, April, we could have a vote, and I would, I would, you know, and then, um, that kind of puts us on, you know, we'd be one year out. Kind of similar, right, that they, because they, they can't develop solid plans, and that's what the community, you know, we have to be clear about what we're presenting, and, um, you know, and, and so I think there's been some misinformation. We were presenting conceptual drawings and wanted some feedback from the Historical Preservation Commission. And, but we can't provide specific drawings until, um, we, the board gives direction, but then we have to, we get our SED. Um, we, then we develop everything for SED approval, so.
The, the primary reason I'm asking is because the other half, the sewer committee, uh, we, we talked about the coordination of the work. So when this work is being done here, when and if, and whatever if that's being done there, that two, the two corporations, two, two companies can coordinate and keep in line with so a lot, Karen, with the law, two, three, four.
Right, and I would say, from what I had heard when I met with Sue, um, and the woman that, um, that, the woman that was working with the town on the grants, um, the, um, it sounded like the timelines may somewhat line up. Um, at least to be able to discussion between the architects and the engineers in terms of.
And Delaware engineer is more than willing to sit down, Mosaic, and do that coordination.
Right.
So we've already, already established that.
And the other thing is that, as you know, when we presented the budget, um, we budgeted for our fleet and engineering study for, for the electric buses, not to say we're buying them anytime soon, but you really need to have those studies to inform us as to what our infrastructure is, what our needs might be, so then we can create a plan. Do we want to jump in, right, you know, it's easy to see the grants and say, oh, let's jump in on that. But if, if our fleet study and how we, our fleet is out there, and what our charging needs are based on how our routing with athletics, if we need four more buses at half a million to add to our fleet than what we have now, so we have to replace, gradually replace our whole fleet, bus, four buses, that's something that we really need to plan out, have a timeline for our infrastructure. Will we need a capital project for our bus garage? You know, those are types of things that we're going to have to look at moving forward. So, um, you know, I think it's a good timing to, um, revisit, uh, tweak it. Um, people will have the opportunity to vote, um, and, um, you know, look at whether or not.
So what are the risks of going slow at this point? It's fifty grand, which may or may not be reimbursable.
No, it will be, if we move forward, it would be, if, as long as the project's approved, which I.
You have some ground to stand on, what are the other risks of moving slow?
Well, this would be, I wouldn't suggest moving slowly, I think we just start a new referendum. Would take, start a new referenda, referendum, um, I wouldn't say there are any risks, I wouldn't move too slowly on the new referendum, um, especially with, we're looking at, because of the timelines, roofs, you, you want to be able to start in the summer. So if we, if we wait until, not to have the vote till, you know, a year from now, in the fall, you're talking about then another year, um, you might not be able to start roof work until twenty twenty-seven. So if we do take a step back, we just want to be focused and, um, have a timeline that's achievable, so we can have an informative campaign to make informative decisions. Um, so the only risk on that is moving too slowly and then being two or three more summers out and not being able to start to.
So kids aren't any risk or, I mean, threat of being in a building that's insufficient.
No, no, and we'll be having our.
Safety risk, nothing.
No, because we, if there was a safety risk, we would be taking money, we would be asking the company for, um, use of the repair reserves or, you know, there's no, there's no risks, but it's proven, if you're going to do a project to. If, if we're opening it up, I wouldn't say let's go spend fifteen million dollars on other stuff and not include the roofs. I don't think that would be something that we should.
I think most people would agree with that.
Agreed.
I think we need to have a conversation and firm up our priorities, like, what is it that we're looking to do with this money? Like, obviously roofs, the stuff that we've already talked about, like, is that what our goal is, is that what we want to do? And then need with Mosaic to move forward, right? I mean, is that?
So I think my, my thought is, is, um, two things. If we want to move forward with the new referendum, rescind the action, and then I, I would say, um, my rec, my recommendation is that we do not take anything off of the current list.
I know, I don't think we should take anything off the current list, and I think the roofs need to be on.
Well, yes, I, I recommend everything on this September that we basically.
Even the stuff that we took off, including the.
West entrance, because really, if you're closing the west entrance, right, our whole point is safety, right? Having double buzz in, that no one has to come through that second, um, that second locked door unless they have to. You're going to have a, you're going to have a window, people can drop. You're going to have a, you're going to have a window, people can drop off lunches, deliveries now.
Great over there, so you really have to redo the ramp anyways, like that's.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, but I think, yes, right. But I think having the best of both, you need it all three parts, because that is a high-traffic public entrance. And it, so I think you complete it, right, we're done. We've got, we've got a hardened.
Yes.
Building in terms of entry, right, doesn't, it's not going to prevent somebody a hundred percent, but it slows people down, it shows that we're being deliberate about our safety and security. The connector reduces the risk of, you know, small children sometimes passing through. You have traffic going through, the playground's much closer now. There are a lot of, there are several as we've gone over and we'll review those again with the community. And I'm confident that we will have a design that is, has historical integrity.
Agreed.
You know, that, that is stuff that, that we can, we can tweak and work on. I don't, you know, I, I hope that wouldn't be a reason to vote it down. I think it's just being interested in the design and wanting to contribute to what it puts.
Now, previously, when we went out with the first capital project, the twenty million project, there was different meeting that, you know, the Keever Firehouse, the Shuichan Bar, I mean, maybe that's something that we need to do to get out there so that people understand what we're doing, because people aren't.
I'm just saying that to have a vote in April is very aggressive. Usually we're going to have a call a lot of special meeting, because just for all of us to agree, to agree on what this money should be spent on is going to take some time, much less than, as Julie says, you will want to promote the campaign. It's going to take some real aggressive action, if you want that, put a timeline. And I know Mosaic will give you that timeline much better than I can, but having been through two projects, it, it takes a lot of work to get that much done in that amount of time. It seems like we're always off of that.
How often should this happen? How often should this happen? This sort of campaign, this, should it be every three years or should it be every five or ten?
The problem is that there was that twenty-year gap, or nothing happened from two thousand when I graduated until twenty. There are a lot of plenty, we didn't do anything.
A lot of it is generated by your building condition survey, right? It happened every five years. It would have seven years because of COVID, but that's going to dictate what your needs are and your, so once we utilize, if we were to utilize in our maximum allowable, I don't know how long it takes before that replenishes, that we can even go back out.
And we could ask them.
That's what I would say at least, but.
Yeah, I would say that most, because the, the process from when you start, so right, we start, we have a referendum and voter approval. We've got the plan. It's another whole year of plans and permits and bids and contractors and timing to get started. So usually from this point, we, we would, and again, it's all timing, right? So the best scenario is you're starting the summer, the best case is 2025. That's if we probably start in the next month or so. If not, then we've got time, because you're not, a lot of the work that we're going to need to do will need to be summer work. And so then you're talking summer of twenty-six, so, you know, I think there's no, there's not a disadvantage, but, you know, again.
Timelines for the roofs and things.
Yeah, but, you know, and I, I think we would be fine and we have ways that we can accommodate. And we don't have roofs falling in, we don't have floods, not from void, but.
You have leaks.
You know, again, I. I, I, I would be remiss if I did not say that I, now I know we live in a very, you know, lovely, you know, this is a very lovely community and there are a lot of good intentions, but I just, I, our buildings are not set up and they're, they should be more secure. We have an office, we have people walking in, we have people letting people in, we've got our administrator, our secretary, we have people that are well away from the entrances, we have people completely, you know, letting other people into this side from between the primary building. It, there are, there are always risks. We cannot have a hundred percent guarantees, but I think.
Carding those entrances will help.
Carding is important. I, I would be, you know, two, three years is a long time away. And I just, I just want to put that out there. I just think that those are highly important and as the sooner we can work, work on that.
So today, our conversation is, do we bring it up for a new referendum or not?
Do we rescind the action?
We want to choose.
So if we, if we go back to how to start and we could continue on the path that we are, we are, we, we started in, in January, or we can take a step back and take a look at, you know, incorporating that in with these other things and move forward, push the, the building project out another year or so, and hopefully no more than a year. And try to get, you know, some of those things done. As, as you said, you know, sometimes it does look like a patchwork when you do a little bit of each part and then you're always chasing it more than if you had done it gradually in the first place. So, you know, this gives us an opportunity. I do know that in the initial conversation, when we were talking about how to proceed with the building project, we were basically informed that how we would not be able to go out with a big, bigger number and that we should take a look at the money that we had been authorized to spend, the likelihood of us going out with another large project on top of the twenty million we've been given was not, at that point, very likely. But things must have changed in the past. But we're also closer to some other debt falling off and some of these conversations started two, two, three years ago about looking at that. And the one thing I did want to bring up about whether or not to stay the course and Mr. Keith and some other people have brought this Kendall decision forward and, you know, I had sent that out to the board a while ago when another resident had brought it up. The dip, some of the dip, there, you know, some people could see parallels, but there's some difference in that that district never had, they did, I would say never, but they had very little, if any, public discussions or did any type of informing the community of spending that money. And I believe that the board had, that we have had a very open discussion and process. And I know some people are just learning, learning about it and hopefully now they will, you know, if we did move forward with another referendum, they would be maybe a little more aware that possibly some forums might be coming up or coming to meetings, because obviously, you know, one of the things is we do have the opportunity for public comment at every meeting that, you know, we have this on the agenda. So, you know, I think we welcome, we would welcome, you know, those comments and then we could just.
Do you want to decide now or do you want to keep talking?
Oh, actually, I think if we, as Karen said, if we would want to keep on a relatively close schedule, if we wanted to commit.
Should this happen?
Yeah, so I think we should. And the thing is, is we have been talking about it for, for well over a year, six, two years, how we want to move forward. So this isn't a new, so it's just a new wrinkle?
Well, and a lot of the stuff on this is already like in the pre-pan planning phase. So it's not like we're going back and starting to square one. We're just adding the roofs and adding additional things.
And we may, you know, if, if the board chooses to add, you know, look at costing out a few more items, if now we need maybe more like twelve.
Well, I think the green house is something that would improve. Program that we often hear, we have a program.
Something to improve programs.
To, to the program. And also, you know, we struggle with ADA compliant bathrooms and, and places. So maybe we can take a look at how we can maybe reconfigure some space.
Right.
Or cells, maybe not, we can't build new ones.
The bathrooms down by the gym, those could, I think, easily be adapted.
Yes, the two down, yes, I, I agree with that, that's a good.
It would also be nice to see if we could get some pain, some handicap accessible signs.
Oh, yeah, we have signage issues. Well, signage was, is on the list. I also think signage for parking, lining the lots. We talked about, the engineer came and we talked about the site work over in that parking lot, crosswalks.
Graduation, concerts, sporting events, like I've seen, I've come to multiple events where I've seen people. At graduation was one, and then I was standing there, this poor gentleman couldn't even get his wheelchair out of his car because there was no place to park. So we just, I just feel like we need to do better things so that people can come and this community wants to come into the building. We need to make it accessible.
Well, I think when we redo all those entrance ways, that will be huge, because right now, if someone wants to leave this building, go to the primary, you have to go into the cafeteria, go down that.
And if the buses are lined up over there, you can't get across.
Then go around, yes, yes, it's very simple. Yes, we've had quite, quite negative, a lot of negative feedback about that. So I agree, ADA compliant bathrooms, but signage, the door openers, that's on the list already that we're looking at even before this project.
That's a really.
Signage outside, obviously accurate, but some signage outside that can point you to how to get parked, you know, elementary, which way to go for the elementary, where to park, which way to go to the field. We, we get a lot of signage and really just looking at that. So, okay, so if you think of other items that you might want to consider, send me an email and or copy each other, at least then we can compile a list that people could think about for.
More discussion with the list this time.
Right, right.
It'd be nice to say, right, this is our cat back for the next ten years, right? Our, our plan must be thoughtful, comprehensive. This is a must-have. This is, it'd be nice to have, this, and maybe something to say, how are we going to improve our program as well? Kind of chew, bring that together in a nice, conscious, comprehensive presentation would be really nice.
But in terms of building or.
Programming is different. That's curriculum, that's what, that's what we've been working on. We, we bought into the reading curriculum or math curriculum, all of those.
Green house, definitely. It's like the benefit, yes, I agree.
And I think Karen's correct, that if we, if we do decide to move forward, it's, we're going to have to dedicate a bit of time to it.
Well, so I was talking, I'm just remembering how we get, we started with a list like that and we had a, had to have.
That's what the presentation could be built on.
We went, it took us like two years and that's what happened was our, our debt fell off. It really affected us financially.
And that has a significant impact on the tax gather.
And had a huge, it was.
So my recommendation is, so, and I, I think there's, there's two different pieces to this. My recommendation is, we, we've identified priority areas and we've already started the work. There may be a few, you know, in the roofs we could add in and maybe a few additional items that we can fit into more of a, a timeline. Then our building condition survey is going to be coming out and as we're doing this, we could start building our wish list for the next discussion. So probably once we get this going by the end of next school year, we're starting, we should already be talking about the next project. Because, and that's as we said, we started compiling this work, we have the new building condition survey, and now we can start thinking about, right, but I think that these are items that have been identified through that last project, the majority of them. There's debate about the connector, but it was identified and there were discussions about it. And so, you know, I think we've got the majority of them identified. Are there some add-ons that we can do right now? And in the meantime, we can be compiling the list. And as we're out there in the community, we can start collecting ideas, you know, for the future. And once we get this going and rolling and into the phase of approvals and, and kind of final process, then we start, we'll have our building condition surveys next year. You know, we'll have the results of that and then we can start building and planning for the next one.
And if you do it Julie's way, you're not going to have twenty-one million dollar projects.
Right, it'd be smaller. Ten, you know, maybe eight, ten million, right, two smaller chunks. So maybe this one's twelve, then the next one might be ten or twelve. The days are probably for our district doing twenty-five, twenty-five million is, it's probably going to be over for the near future, I would imagine, unless something comes up about EV buses or something like that. You know, they decide that they're going to help.
I think there's a lot that needs to go into those buses besides just what the school district needs to do. I think the state needs to put some more thought into that.
That's right, and, and I think we just need to know our situation so we can.
Agreed.
You know, be thoughtful about opportunities, but worry about making any commitments until we really know what our reality.
This helps fill our five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year plan, so that's never happened before. It hasn't happened here ever.
Right, and so not only do we want to be in a bus schedule, we want to be on roof schedule, we want to be on, you know, we, we need to be looking at. So that's actually what you're saying, right? Like we've got to be identifying, all right, so we're finished, we got this and now we're going to start thinking about the next project. Here, we're starting to create our list. So that way we get an idea for how much it is and when we're ready to jump in, right? So we don't want to compile a list of thirty million dollars, because it's going to take us a long time to get that done. So I, I think.
It's a really big.
Scary, it is scary.
Well, and the maximum you can borrow for fifteen years. What, what, it's a maximum you can borrow for fifteen years. So rather two million or at twenty million.
And it's good to be developing our list, because we also can do annually, once we get, hopefully next year, in our next budget, a hundred thousand dollars earmarked for us to run, it's in the budget for capital work. We can do small little projects each year and now you've got eighty percentage. So what we do, we got to upfront the eighty thousand, but the following year, now we got eighty coming in and we, we've only got a twenty. Right now, we, we're financing those next hundred thousands every year. We can do those smaller chunks each year. So we identify big things that got to go in the big project, smaller things that we can kind of have on a schedule for the next few years to be doing. We definitely, this is definitely the roof. My, my thought is I just don't want to, I don't know if this is the time to start that big giant process so that we can get some of this.
No, I think, no, I think, you know, starting with the priorities that we have and adding those few additional things, I think that's where we start as a priority and then we start planning out what could we do in five years, what could we do in ten? What, what will allow us to be able to be done?
You have to keep in mind, talking about the EV buses a lot, but from the conference I just had, right now the state is not budgeting on their dates, twenty twenty-five, you don't buy any more for bus to buses.
I know, let's see what happens with the state budgets when they can't budget any money to help with these things.
That's why the next few years, we're going to be re-upping and rotating through. So we won't be forced into that maybe until like twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We'll have a little time. And we'll have time and I think now more districts are going to do studies like we're doing to be able to say, listen, we can't do, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the power.
You go from here to Northmore and you're going to have to stop and charge a bus.
I'm simply, I'm simply putting it out there that, that as, as at this point, the legislature and the governor's office have said, no, we're sticking by this.
And that's fine, we'll just see what happens as we go forward and keep us all silent.
Do you have to drive it?
But it is planning.
So what, so some of these grants.
Buy the bus and sit, and sit there?
Some of the, some of the grants, some of the grants though, that they're currently offering, you have to actually, so we applied for, there was a recent federal grant that some people got. If you get the bus, right, so if you bought two buses through that grant, and one of the provisions of the grant is you have to take two of your existing buses, you can't sell them, you have to destroy them, so they are off the road. You can't sell them, you have to destroy them. That is.
Somebody might want to build a house out of, I mean, come on.
I mean, that's hard for me too, you know, you bought that bus. You know, we, yeah, so, you know, I just think that we have to be thoughtful and it will be, as we have the fleet study, we'll present that to the board, we'll present our recommended timeline, how we think we want to move forward over the next.
I think the hard thing is what the state's not thinking about too, is like, it's not just the buses, it's not just buying the buses, it's the infrastructure to charge the buses. It's, we have to have chargers inside and outside.
The state is thinking about that, but what they're saying is, we don't care.
So, 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 I know that, that the buses are certainly a hot topic, I don't want to be too, stay focused on the fact that, you know, we want to make a decision. So are people comfortable at this point?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's, if everybody's in agreement, then the action that we took on February fifteen, twenty twenty-three was to approve, to approve the notification of amendment, the professional service agreement with the Board of Education and Mosaic Associates Architects for the remaining scope of the work. So what we would need to do is entertain a motion to rescind the action taken on February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. So what we would need to do is entertain a motion to rescind the action taken on February 15, 2023 to approve that amendment. Any further discussion? All those favor for rescind by, by, but that effectively puts a halt to this particular part. Of, of the work. And then also, like to entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to move forward with Mosaic Associates Architects. On incorporating a new referendum, new reference. Any further discussion? And at this point now, that does leave us with the responsive petition that we have.
Well, this kind of makes it moot at this point, doesn't it?
Who's getting first?
There's an addendum for action, responsive petition that you have, so.
Yep. So entertain a motion to approve the following resolution. Whereas during the meeting of the Board of Education of the Salem Central School District held on June 21st, 2023. A document titled petition to the Salem Central School District, Salem, New York. The petition that purports to have been signed by residents of the school district, the petitioners, was presented to the Board of Education. And whereas the petition states that the undersigned residents of the Salem Central School District had concerns about the Phase 2 project. Claims that since the items for the proposed Phase 2 were not presented in the scope of the original project. We demand a referendum vote for the items proposed in Phase 2. And whereas although the petition does not specify the items that were proposed for the Phase 2 project that the petitioners claim were not presented. In the scope of the original project, the board understands the petition to be related to proposed construction work. Connector between the school district's primary and main school buildings. Now therefore, be resolved that the petition is rejected because it is ambiguous and fails to specify precisely the proposition. The petitioners seek to be presented to the voters of the school district and be a further resolved. That to the extent petitioners seek to place a proposition on the ballot that requires the expenditure of money. The petition is rejected because it fails to specify the amount of money for which the voter approval is sought. And be a further resolved that to the extent the petition seeks to prevent construction work at connector. Between the school district's primary and main school buildings. Without agreeing with the petitioners' claim that the approval for such work has not already been lawfully obtained by the school district. The petition is rejected as moot because the school district does not intend to proceed with such work at this time. So other board business is our committees. Technically, we usually have our policy, finance and personnel, and we have had other ad hoc committees. Is there any call for me other than policy and finance and personnel at this point? No? So that does leave us with the two operating. One, we're six, we've already, not technically a board committee, because as other members, these are just actually, you know, our board committees, our external committee. So, right now, I have been on the policy committee and we have been on, on the finance. Then on the ad hoc committee. So does anybody have any preference for which committees they would like to or would wanna serve, serve on?
The finance and personnel.
I'd like this at policy committee.
Can you explain the ad hoc committee?
Ad hoc, when we've had different. Issues in the school district, we've had, we had. For. Other things that, you know, would actually take up quite a bit of time in our regular meetings. But we can have sort of information gathering and then bring the report and recommendations to the board. That does seem to help streamline process. So at this point, I don't, do you perceive a meeting for a specific topic or committee?
I don't, you know, my thought is down, you know, as we get a little down the road. Maybe a possible ad hoc committee. I'm looking forward to the future, kind of looking at our future priorities for capital work. Maybe while around the time when the building condition survey comes out, that might be a time for an ad hoc committee. So something to maybe keep on the shortlist, you know, to Tom's point is to really then start creating a vision for kind of those next few projects. Obviously always leaving room for things that might come up, but at least kind of just having more of a longer term plan.
So at that point, just since us with those two committees, then we, we limit them to two board members. With superintendent or anybody else who, you know, is interested in attending. Only me plus three makes the forum and that creates a situation where we take action and that's not the purpose of it.
Right.
It is to do that labor and bring that conversation back to the board. So that does for five of us, with only the two committees currently, that does it if somebody, you know, without a commitment assignment, which is fine. So, I just wanted to see, kind of canvas people as to what they put their interests where.
What, what's available?
Well, policy or politics?
I'd be more interested in policy.
Alright, sorry about that. Done it different ways, where we had a certain recurring schedule. First Monday or the second Thursday or whatever. So whatever works best for everybody last week and sort of. Talked about it at the board meeting, you know, and the next meeting was all, so. Whatever is most comfortable for the, for people that are working on it. Other than that, one other thing. I don't know if you saw it on the onboarding magazine, the newspaper. One of the things they talked about is having the vice president of the board formally. Circumstances evaluated, is that something?
Yes, but I think we need to get to it sooner, so we need to make a definite schedule, because it's, you know, it's not time when I don't be thinking about that.
Lot going on then.
Trying to get everything in.
And then with the switch of the board members, it makes it confusing too, so yes, we can talk about that.
Sure. Also kind of coordinating both, like kind of.
To see an ad hoc committee coming out right now.
But because we also should be taking a look at the goals for ourselves too.
I know.
So, I just wanted to throw it out there and just sort of think about how you wanted, how, there are times, there are things that we should be thinking about throughout. When we're not waiting to the very end to.
Waiting on the evaluation that we just did, is that what you're thinking?
Check-ins, because we can't see parts until the superintendent releases those parts, so. It's not, it's not something that we can see in motion.
But, so, the one that we just completed, it was Peter, myself, Dan, like, so are we gonna present that to Julie? Is that the one we're still talking about or?
Yeah, that's still in process, but I'm talking about the one.
It's important, so we shouldn't.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So that would be something that. Thank you. And we did have a few dates to remember in August and then school starts in September.
This teacher would like to stay in July for the moment, please.
Just on that board, so I think a few people, just a reminder, there's the opportunity. Tomorrow is the in-person law conference and Tom and I are going to in-person, I think one or two people might be signed up for virtual. And there is, that is, so I think there are a couple of virtual dates that you could still sign up for. So if you're, did wanna get in on the virtual, or she wanna go last minute tomorrow and join us. But just contact Jean and she can help you get signed up. It is kind of nice, even though sometimes they go a little quickly through. They provide you with a lot of recent case studies and new cases or things that are hot topics in terms of educational law. And some things that we will probably be hearing about or focusing on in the upcoming school year, so it gives us a little heads up.
Nice to meet her, my, was your university?
Actually, I don't know, I think you're gonna look in the, I don't think there's a policy to that.
There would have to be a policy, you know, general policy.
Yeah, and there is, is Bob, correct, those leadership conferences, end of them on Friday and Saturdays at the 27th. Right, so if anybody wants to join in, I think a few of us are going to that as well. 27th and 28th. That the Desmond on.
I think you said you might be able to tell.
I don't know, 28th and 29th, Friday the 28th and Saturday the 29th. Usually like the second day is about a half day, it's not your whole Saturday. They are very, very, I haven't been to the summer one yet, but I think we've been to the summer. But they're usually worthwhile.
So anything else from the board?
Any opportunity to attend the Royal Schools Association conference group or stuff? Two of the, two of the presentations that I went to were very enlightening. One of them, school district south of Buffalo, that was literally brought back from the dead. The superintendent came in and said, okay, she was asked, why are you coming here? The district should emerge. She said, that's not lying here for the community, and that district is now thriving. It's just very small, just 227 students total. She spoke about how that happened, how they got the district back and how it did, has become vibrant again. And a great deal of it was her relationship with how she built their relationship with her board of petition. The board took several retreats and established goals for themselves and, and have. Really applied it by those roles rigorously. And then they did the same thing that we just went through with the thought exchange and establishing the, the. The DNA of the school basically, and then she talked about branding and making sure that, that you, you got that out there. And that you, when, when somebody came to the superintendent and said we'd like their, to the principal, said we'd like to start a, a new. Club that does this, how does it fit? How does it fit with our goals, with our mission, with, with our mission statement? If it doesn't, then we don't do it. Yeah, so that was an excellent presentation. The one that I got the. Got a pad of myself, but it was all of us on the back four, I went to a presentation on. Emotional support animals versus therapy animals. We did the right thing. They, no, except that most support animals are there to serve one person of one person alone. Therapy animals are there to serve, are certified, qualified and there to, to serve all persons. Pets are not meant to be at school. Was basically the, the layout that they, they gave. And if the dog is not certified, is not by the agriculture department, there's really no reason for it to be in the school. The last, the last day they asked presentation, which I thought was the most informative, was I think had the most impact and probably several ad hoc committees down the road. Was the Blue Room Panel on Graduation Requirements. They're looking at some very interesting, very innovative, very educationally sound changes. In graduation requirements, looking at. Check my notes, make sure I get them working right. Project-based requirements or initiatives. Competency-based, which would really be looking at what we're doing now with reading seminars and then step-by-step through and performance-based. So for the CT programs and all those, and even for, for some of the more academically based programs. These performance-based initiatives are really taking step to the front. We can expect to see their report around November. The question is now, does that report get disseminated and used or does it get put on a shelf somewhere with a thank you? So watch for that and, and be ready to, to, to engage with, with, with the results. Panel was very informative and spent a good deal of time answering questions and, and going through the step-by-step what they've done, so. I forget an opportunity to listen to hear them at some point, they're definitely worth a second.
I would anticipate that they'll possibly be at the, there'll be more information. It is far away this year, the news conference is in Buffalo. We have one possible taker, I don't know if Peter's in or not, but he's. So Peter and I will be going, so if you, you know, it is a little bit of a journey. And I car pulled her up to Syracuse and, right, was it Syracuse? We went to the, yeah, and it was great. I mean, it's just a wealth of information. So it, it's worth it. So it's nice to always have a few people go out so that we can hit more. They usually have three or four different seminars, workshops going on at one time. Wait till you see that even compared to Royal Schools, it's very exciting. But the Blue Ribbon Panel, really the idea is to add alternative pathways and really look at, really future-based focused. More against cover portfolios and really those competency-based. So it's not only so much of what you know, but it's how you utilize it, you know, and what, what are you, what are you doing with.
The study groups, the students, that the one thing they heard from every group, when they asked students what they wanted to see improved in their education. Every single group said we wanna be better readers, we wanna be better writers, and we wanna look math at a conceptual level. Three things they, every math form, so that, that tells you a little bit about the competency base, how that can incorporate with the others.
Any other thoughts? At this point, I'd like to open up the meeting to public comment, if there's anybody who has any questions or concerns.
There's only one behind me. Thank the board for tableaus, are rescinding at this point in time, the work that has been done. To enclose the arc. Julie is 100% correct. It doesn't matter what this school district does or any other school district or business, church, church, you name it. Is going to be 100% standard. Doesn't matter if you grow the arch and, doesn't matter if you put up 10-foot-high fences around here. When I was in China, the Gidi communities did have fences and they had alarms. Straight fence, they had a tie over here, it's like you trip your garage door, you walk, you're like going up or down, or when it's coming down, you walk, you're going back up. So there, you know, they had much better security over there than we had there. Would, I do have a couple of questions. And by the time I get home, my dinner should be pulled off. I'm just a little bit perplexed, subject 7.2, building news request for LLP, wrestling. Far as I know, today's July 19th, correct? Okay, and you didn't approve them to use it for two sessions, 7/11, 7/13, and 7/25, 7/27. How can they use it before you approve? Who, who gives that, or they didn't use it 7/11 and 7/13?
It can be probationally approved, and then we make the actual motion to approve the.
Okay, but somebody knew that they were going to use it.
Yes. They fill out, Julie used one, and there's a lot of information.
I would just like to, now that we're moving forward, hopefully in, partly the same direction, this original building project started out at $40 million. Mr. Glover was here, he did off-site, he does the firehouse, he did in West Severn, he did in a lot of different places, he actually did a tour, come on the tour. We went over to the bus drive, we thought the beam would fall in, we locked in the boiler room, had three boilers, two were stinging, and one was hot water. We did the 10 floor, but we redid it, originally they were going to spend, that's probably where they saved a million dollars, because they just refinished it. I don't know how much he spent on lockers. As far as I know, the school population is, was stated here, last month or the month before, we're down to 520, 540.
I would say 530, don't have 540, depending on the, watch weights, but 530-ish.
So, this is from the petition that we referenced, and it said, Project Scope, the district is required to propose all phases of capital project, including detail of the work spoke to SED, which you're apparently giving, or approval. SED allows school districts to prepare a shopping list, which you're doing after the fact, desired items in the original, in the original plan, and specifications as, as alternative, alternate, in the event that there are remaining appropriations at the project's end, however, these should be part of the proposition approved by the board. So, as you guys move forward, I've always wanted to be president of the school board, that's why I did run for it one time. The only way you can get a school board is through, the board has changed, there used to be, there's five members, term for five years. We got some great lady from Texas come up that changed the board, that, well, we're going to change the board to three-year term, might do that, but we're going to get more participation, we're going to get more community input. I see how that would go, I was against that from the beginning, the five members, each had a one-year term as president of the board. So, and you've been president for about three years now or four years?
Three years.
Okay, yeah, how did that? You request to become the president, or does the board vote on, nobody else wants to be president?
That, that occurs at the organizational meeting.
Yeah.
We start that, and there's a nomination and a vote.
Because originally you weren't on the ballot this past year.
Yes, you were.
Yeah, you had to write your name in.
No, no. Found out a nominating petition, and my name was actually printed out.
All right, well, there, I got some misinformation in there. Well, the good news is, is I don't have to get over the local news station at this point, dying for any construction going on in school. And you read the petition, I understand it, you accepted it, protected it because you did not have enough information on it, you did not have the monetary funds that you were planning on spending, but there were a total of seven, or 27, I believe, firemen. I mean, they have to go to people's houses for firehouse, so, I mean, there may have been some concern with what this school was proposing. At one point in time, Dr. Glover threatened to shut down the elementary building and move all those kids, how many kids are over there?
We actually did for a year, the building was, during the building project, and the kids were actually moved, the students were moved into this main building, and they found homes for all the classrooms, that whole building was shut off to students for almost an entire school year, and it was tough when we came back, we're trying to find spots after COVID, to, that was one of the reasons we couldn't come back to school, it wasn't a threat, that was just the, in order to get the work done inside that building, with the asbestos abatement and everything, it did need to be shut off.
So, there's no asbestos in that building whatsoever?
Well, whatever, generally, I'm not sure there is, but some remain, there's asbestos in several parts of the building because of the, only the abatement occurs where the areas of work will occur, so they were doing work on the heating system and doing some other work, so they needed to obey to have access to the ductwork, so if we were going to change all of our floors, we would have to obey because a lot of our tiles are asbestos. We have walls that have asbestos in them, so in certain parts of the buildings, depending on the age of the buildings, so there, all the asbestos is not there.
Well, somebody gave me a great idea, I'll just pass it on to you guys, you didn't have a problem, how many, well, I never did find out how many students were in that building over there?
We didn't have a, it was difficult. It was not easy.
But how many kids? 30, 50, 100?
Well, there are, there are other offices and people.
Well, somebody came and gave me this great idea, pass it on to the board, I'm not going to get a petition up for it, but what happened is we moved all the administration over there, so we don't have to worry about little kids going through the arch. You can set up your computers over there, you know, you can have the whole thing. The other idea was, keep that building to the seniors, they're big enough to walk in and out without getting hit by the buses or, so there's two other ideas. Hope somebody calls me and asks me to come next month, by the way, I probably get full shoulder when I go home. Thank you, Bill, I know you guys are doing, you have an important job. I'm glad that you at least have heard, the people that signed that petition, the 80 plus, and I have some more at home, I carried, I didn't bother bringing it tonight because I didn't figure there was a need to, I figured you guys would be going, we're going to charge ahead, we're going to say it's for the security of the building, we don't care about the roof, we care about the perimeter. I hope that you put new pavement in the driveways, put new walkways in, let people don't trip and fall, and if you decide, still decide, to go ahead and postpone the arch agenda, and you wouldn't take the idea of pull the buses in, you had, have all opportunities you still have today, and see what they're going to look like, or diagonal, if it's off, you're going to have to walk rather.
That was just a conceptual plan, it wasn't the.
That wasn't final.
Certainly not the only option of how we would do drop off. So, thank you, Bill.
Okay, oh, I do have one other. How many people are considered low income in the Salem community?
Well, our free and reduced is right, about 47%.
47, so that's dropped, Mr. Glover was here, because it was 59% that.
No, it wasn't.
That's the highest, that's bad. I would say this is the highest.
But you guys don't, nobody has to fill out the reduced or free lunch.
They do.
They do.
So, the number could be higher, there's a lot of people that won't fill out the paperwork.
Okay, so, those people that are qualified for that, in the community, who get free lunches or free breakfast or whatever free you're giving away, whether the state government funded or the state government funded, how many of those people do you think can afford to have internet, have computers, and have all the digital stuff that you have in the school district here? Probably not a lot of them, I don't know if you agree with that, we'll figure it out, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of middle, below, or below law families in the area, so, I don't know how you communicate to them that we want to spend money, raise your taxes, which you may not be able to afford, and you know how many people, it's on the budget, there's not much money for, even people can't afford to pay your tax, so consider that when you, when you think about spending that $29,300. If it's in the, if I was in the Powerball, I'll pay today the 50 grand, and I want a new contract, because I don't think, you know, what they did, was even, well, being prepared. Thank you, you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to move into an executive session for the purpose of some of the reflective negotiations with the Washington Teachers Association, any other discussion about, yes, and for the discussion of the employment history of the particular, I'm saying. So, move. I come out here, all those in favor, because I say, there's an Indiana, is that it?
Yes, okay.
So, we don't anticipate any action.
No, sorry, I got home at 1:00, I said, I filled my cell phone up.